Time is now six thirty-two. I'll call it a order. The regular meeting of the voting board for October twenty-second. If you'll arise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go first.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Eric Holston.
Here.
Horne.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
And Raisik.
From.
I believe we have an indication from the Senate.
Thank you once again for allowing us to open the reading of prayer. Most crucial item on the agenda with heaven and should be honored as well. That's great. Our heavenly Father, tonight we obey the scriptures and pray for those in authority over the village of Moonee. Paul the Apostle said to Timothy, "The first thing I want you to do is to pray. Pray every way you know how. Pray for everyone you know. Pray especially for rulers and their governments to rule well so that we can be quietly about our business and living simply and humble in contemplation. This is the way our Savior, God, wants us to live." So tonight we pray for the village of Moonee and leadership, township as well. That the burden, passion for everyone, as Paul had, respell the believers. That there will be a continued unity of the Holy Spirit to work together for good in all the people of this village and this township area. May we pray and follow the same advice and make the same request that Paul the Apostle made of the church in Colossi. And he prayed, he said, "Be earnest and unwearied and steadfast in your prayer life, being both alert and intent in your praying with thanksgiving." And at the same time, he said, "Pray for us also." Yes, Paul the Apostle requested prayer and believed that prayer would make a difference, a world difference under that Roman empire at the time that he lived. That God may open a door for us, for the word of God, the gospel, to be proclaimed, the mystery concerning Christ the Messiah, on account of which I am a prisoner. That I may proclaim it fully and make it clear, speak boldly and unfold the mystery as is my duty. And then you gave us some advice through Paul the Apostle. You said, "Behave yourselves wisely, living prudently and with discretion in your relations with those of the outside world that might not believe, making the very most of the time and seize," that is buying up the opportunity. Let your speech at all times be gracious, pleasant, when so, seasoned as it were with salt so that you may never be at a loss to know how you ought to answer anyone who puts a question to you. So we thank you now, Jesus, for asking the Father to advance the Holy Spirit into this meeting room tonight so that correct decisions will be made to encourage, strengthen and uplift all residents of this great community. We believe that you want to do great and mighty things that we know not of here in Moonee, Illinois. We pray as in the wonderful name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen and amen.
At this time, we go to open the public. Agenda items normally, please move your cameras three minutes.
Hi, my name is Collette Wayne. Keep following me if you need to report. I have a question regarding the landlord licensing. I read the minutes from the last meeting.
Sure.
And I'm quite sure with the new landlord licensing. In addition to the fact that Moonee has sixty-five rental homes and two hundred paid-in homes. Of those rental homes, are you not including the apartment buildings? And of the rental homes, how many of those homes that are registered own and how many are still owned by the owners? And when you talk about landlord licensing, are you including both of those?
Yeah. This is a process, it's a work in progress. And we have not gotten to the point where we've made any firm decisions on any of that. The information that was provided, the last meeting was a summary of information, not meant to be accurate, but meant to provide us some kind of a feel for where we're at on things. If it stated that there are sixty-five rental homes, I don't know that we know that for exact fact, but that's the rough estimate that we've identified based on information we have at this point. Because we don't have a licensing policy for landlords. And just suffice to say this, a landlord would be somebody typically that owns property that doesn't reside there and somebody else does.
Okay.
So it could be an apartment building, it could be somebody who's owned the home for years and has been in the family and somebody else lives there that's still considered to be a landlord.
Okay. All right. So you're going a little further with this without making any decisions?
Well, we're just going-- Right. We wanted to give the trustees and the public an opportunity to review and to offer input. And we're not at a point yet where we have anything drafted as a final version of ordinance that's being presented for the public at this point.
Okay.
We need to move forward on that if we're going to do it before the end of this year. Just to, you know, typically it's on an annual basis, you look at certain things like that. But it's something we've looked at for various reasons and it's worked well in other communities. And that's the reason why trustee Holston, the police chief and others have looked into this and researched other communities to see what's worked for them.
Yeah, they take some of-- well, I'll tell you, I remember across the street from one that was-- they destroyed the house. The eviction notice is still on the door. It's owned by American Home. American Homes for Rent.
Right.
Now it's owned by them. But they destroyed the house and it's a travesty. Our little Colosseum now looks like a mess because of those people. But yeah, they should have been monitored by actually--
So that means you'd be interested in seeing something like this happen?
Yeah, because we have investor-owned homes and I even called them, I emailed them because they have a place they can even scopy or shop them or something. I never got a response from them, you know, telling them how they identified the place was. They never responded to it. Now they're just starting to work on it.
Okay.
Anybody else? I understand a motion to approve the consent agenda. So Luke, Sager. Holston, Maris. Roll call please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Clerk's report.
Your early voting is underway with our Gulf Biscuit volunteers, staff running everything. They're doing a great job. Early votings, Monday to Friday here in Village Hall, ten to four, and Saturday, nine to twelve.
It goes through--
Up until November second, or November second voting starts for--
So, oh, so through this Friday, next Friday, or this Friday and Saturday, and then it's only up till next Friday? We don't do Saturday?
Yeah, Monday is the second. And then the other two items are the clerk's report. It's actually a copy of paste here. Same concept. We have regular board meetings scheduled for November twenty-sixth, the day before Thanksgiving, and December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve. So the intent here was to allow the board to see that on the calendar to see if they wanted to not have those board meetings or remove them somewhere else. So it's actually November twenty-sixth and December twenty-fourth should be on.
Right. So-- It's probably good to go ahead and get that figured out at this point now as to whether or not you guys want to meet Thanksgiving and Christmas either.
Doug goes.
Doug goes?
Yeah.
I'm not sure it makes sense to meet those nights, but if particularly some of this stuff might have to be done at the end of the year, we might want to look at a meeting a week of, the twenty-fourth earlier, maybe twenty-second.
Yeah, and I think it depends on what comes up. You know, we are already anticipating having an extra meeting in November because of a public hearing that would be necessary for the Gitchin Trail. So I think that as we have a meeting, which we always call a special meeting, just to address the business at hand. So--
But instead, it might be easier if we schedule it now so everybody would know that.
I agree.
If we have some specific--
If we-- If we already schedule a meeting like on the Tuesday night ahead of time instead of calling the special meeting, which we have the regular rules to. Right?
Forty-eight hour notice. Yeah, so I mean, if we had to call a meeting, we'd only have to have a forty-eight hour notice to call a special meeting. So I don't know specifically if anything needs to be addressed in the second meeting in November. I was talking to the police chief about this. He's been around here longer than-- anyhow. John, you were telling me a while back that they used to only do one meeting a month. Anyhow, it's just that they typically had to address--
Normally for bills, we had something come up and like move it all the way to Monday.
So up to you guys. I don't know if everybody needs to check their calendar for that. I mean, we can postpone, come up with that answer until the next meeting if you choose. Or we can simply choose to cancel it now and then schedule it by the next meeting if necessary.
I think so. We persisted with chief just said about the bills and what our finance policy is now. We can't, we can't send the checks out until--
Right. So, they're open?
Who was it?
Oh, you know.
Probably working. I'm not sure what, when he needs to have those in by order of process. Michelle, do you know? Would one day, would one day make a difference on that?
As far as what?
If we moved it to Tuesday night of that week?
That would be fine.
So you'd still be able to get your--
The best.
If you weren't less than all that done?
I would, I think I would say that December twenty-fourth one, I mean, that's way too close to Christmas. Everybody's going to be running around all over the place.
Thanksgiving-- December twenty-fifth?
Yeah, it gets me out of cleaning the house. You know, I would think that that one would be the more, like, you know, by that point, we should have everything settled. If we want to move it up two days, I don't think that that's going to be a big deal.
On both of those days?
No, just on the December twenty-fourth one.
I was thinking, don't want to interrupt you, trustee Gray, but I'm in the same vein as you. I'm thinking that Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving, I don't know how many have a problem with it. I do not--
No, I don't.
You know, Christmas Eve I would--
Yeah.
I'd like to see us move that date, but I wonder if we should just call the board and see if anybody disagrees with having a meeting the day before Thanksgiving.
I would have, I would have a conference.
On Tuesday?
Uh, no, not on Tuesday, but Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, November?
Yeah, November one.
Yeah, I, I just like, if we're going to, just to be sensitive, we want prioritized family issues, so--
Right. No, can we, can we go this route and what is that, November twenty, the Tuesday before? Twenty-five, November twenty-fifth. Okay, so if we had to have a meeting, call a special meeting on November twenty-fifth, which is Tuesday, and we have it posted by Saturday, if need be for a--
Well, you're saying, tentatively, that not else we needed.
Correct.
I see what you're saying. So-- Same time for Christmas, Tuesday, the twenty-third? Or you want to pop that up an extra day or?
I agree with trustee Gonzalez. I'd like to see it intended and scheduled.
All right, so we tend to always schedule for the Tuesday instead of the Wednesday of those weeks.
We can always cancel them if there's nothing left to do. That way the public knows we do intend to have meetings and if for some reason we have no business, then we can cancel. Gives us incentive to get our work done.
Okay. So I don't know if we really, so we probably do need a, a motion to cancel the November twenty-sixth. Would, let me just do the, let me do this in four lines. Okay. I want to take a motion to cancel the November twenty-sixth for me.
So move.
Second. Okay, Gonzalez and Raisik, roll call.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Sure. I want to take a motion to schedule a special meeting, I guess the board would technically be, so we can take action, for Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, if necessary. So it's Holston and Raisik.
Trustee Horne.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
I want to take a motion to cancel the December twenty-fourth meeting.
So move.
I think our Gonzalez, you want to second up, Sean?
I'll second.
All right, he's first. Gonzalez and Pop, roll call please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yeah.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Horne.
Yes.
I want to take a motion to schedule a special meeting of the village board for December, Tuesday, December twenty-third, if need be.
Second.
Raisik and Holston. Roll call please.
Trustee Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horne.
Yes.
And Pop.
Yes.
All right. That's all I have here. Thank you very much. I want to bring the board up to speed on the enterprise zone that we've been working to secure. It's a multi-municipal zone. It's referred to as the I-57 Will Cook Corridor, which would include the villages of Moonee, Matteson, Bridgestone Park, University Park, Park Forest. Would all be part of that county zone. The, there is a public hearing scheduled on October twenty-ninth at seven p.m. at the Matteson Community Center. So everybody's-- everybody's wanting to attend that. And I would encourage businesses or whoever else that may have questions about it. It's just a opportunity just to hear about what's going on with the direction of that at this point. And if you all have any questions about that more specifically before or after that meeting, just give me a call.
I'll have a, can you elaborate just a little bit what that means? Is that tax incentives?
Yeah, that's the biggest, one of the biggest incentives, there's, there's, I think in the last, was it the last packet? Do we have some informationary about the enterprise zone? But one of the biggest incentives has to do with the ability for a developer to build without paying sales tax on the construction materials. That's probably one of the biggest incentives for new development. Additionally, there's other incentives when it comes to employment issues or if you're a company that needs to secure, let's say fabricating equipment or whatever kind of things like that that you need for the everyday working of your operations, there's tax incentives that are involved in that as well. So it's a pretty significant, it ends up being like two or three percent of the overall cost of a project sometimes and savings as a result of not having to pay sales tax on the building materials used for a new development. It's pretty significant and it's a nice incentive. There's, the current enterprise zones that are regulated and implemented by the state are set to expire the end of next year and then also the following year, the two different cycles that are available. So the South Suburban Mayors and Managers, Chicago Southland Economic Development Council have been collaborating with municipalities that are in our segment here and have come up with four zones based on commonality. And basically the zone has to be less than fifteen square miles in its entire, for the acreage or whatever is directly affected by that. Any more questions? I'm not sure if I answered that.
And just to add on to that, Mayor, the reason for doing it as a community effort is it appears to be down the ground is at the I-AML meetings we went to last month that villages that work together on this are more likely to get it than if you try to go it alone.
Right.
It's much more chances of successful. They really clamp down on the requirements and specifications. So a lot easier to get these things approved now if villages work together.
Well, in our situation, when we work together as a group of municipalities that we have common concerns with, we benefit from each other's labor force analysis as well. Ours might be a little stronger than, I'll say, one of our neighboring towns. But we benefit from the entire footprint that's described by that. There's opportunities for some collaborative efforts on existing enterprise zones and Mr. Batista's been working with Chicago Heights to see if, until this zone expires-- they're, they currently have a zone of their own. Other towns have, like one or two towns worked together in the past. But if there's an ability for us to work with, say, Chicago Heights on their current zone to include the build-up for Butter, that would be a nice assistance to them. So anything we can do to try to leverage our relationships that we've established with our neighboring communities, it works out good for everyone. It's, no, it doesn't do any disservice to the communities that are partnered. Let's see, this is, you know, it shows that we're working together. And frankly, when you get out of Springfield, it's a little more incentive when we have, within the zone that we're describing, that would be a total of, I believe, four state rep districts that are, that are, that are within the zone that we're looking at. And it'd either be, it'd probably be two or three senate districts. So that being the case, all the more leverage to encourage that opportunity. So not every community is seen American, but every time you create an opportunity, it's, it's an incentive for the businesses. There's a small administrative fee that, to manage the zone. And I believe that traditionally that had been identified as like a half a percent as the alternative to the full six and a half, seven, eight percent sales tax that they were going to be paying. It was kind of interesting talking to the folks from Matteson because if people buy their materials in, let's say, Home Depot or Menards, but they're doing a development here, we don't, we don't feel the impact of that on a sales tax perspective because they're not buying it from us. So it's not hurting us at all since we don't have any hardware stores or suppliers of products in that regard. The fact that we're giving a sales tax incentive through the state on this program wouldn't affect them any much at all in a negative way. Other towns that are, that are the bed of developers' hardware and everything else, like Mattson, you know, has a couple hardware stores and different things like that, they might feel a little bit, but they also have a larger area that they are benefiting from as well. Bottom line is it's an incentive to help everybody bring development to Illinois instead of letting it continue to migrate out of state. Good. I don't have on the agenda, but I do want to bring to everyone's attention that I have another vacancy in the police commission. And so if anyone knows of any who may be interested in that, please let me know. And we need to identify somebody. Currently we have two out of the three numbers, which they can still function that way. But ideally we have a full three-member commission so that they can, three heads are better than two. I guess that's how to figure it out, but I'd hate to see a tight vote between two people and then not having-- so anyhow, so we're looking for another individual to help us on the police commission. And just so everybody understands, the police commission is not so much an area where you'd have to have expertise in police functions or department things in that regard. It's really much more of a, John, let me say that the police commission really has structures more about HR and hiring practices and even in some cases, not that we ever see this disciplinary of a full-time officer, but in other cases--
Hiring and disciplinary hearings after any disciplinary--
And that would only be if that was a request of a, a full-time officer that wanted to go report the police commission on that. So it's really more of an HR thing than it is about, you know, anything about law enforcement per se. It helps to, you know, have a good insight into that, but it's much more of a human resources and community perspective and things, so. And lastly, I believe you each have a, do they have a show? Friday of this week, there is a, Chicago Southland Economic Development Council is having a meeting at Prairie State College. And among other things, I believe they're going to be talking about the fiber network that is being deployed in our area. And I know that they've, they've just barely gotten it started and they're already talking about trying to extend the laterals a little further east and west. And so again, this is an opportunity for the south suburbs to be taken seriously as a place for people to grow their technology-centric businesses. So I believe currently they're, they've identified a big of it, internet speeds would be available through this. And I think for us, that's great, especially with the infrastructure that would be necessary to recruit businesses to come to our town. It's, it's all good. So if you guys want to come up Friday morning, so the public, anybody else who wants to come up too? I believe the website is chicago southland epc dot com. If you want to get more information about it, you can even sign up to be on their mailing list on a regular basis. But anyhow. One last point I do want to make here, not specifically on any particular topic. I do want to have an opportunity to talk to each of the trustees at some point in the near future. So if you can call me. I had a couple things come up that I feel a little, of a little more sensitive nature and we just don't like this. Just getting some time in the next couple days to give me a call. And I'll do the officials' report.
A couple things tonight. First off, the Public Works Department is aware that the sewer, the storm sewers in Eagle Ridge are starting to back up again as it does pretty much every year. They are on top of it. They see it. They will be working on it. Also too, they are in the process of tree removal. If you've seen our trucks around town, big trucks pulling out the trees, they are pulling those trees out, plus the stumps. And they will be replanting trees this fall and going into spring next year. They actually got a very good deal. They have ninety trees going in in the next approximately, you know, two months depending on the weather, and then they're going to come back at spring. So they're actually going to be ahead of schedule of what their budget was calling for. Again, they did get a very good deal on these trees, so you will see these trees popping up. Hopefully the weather holds out like it's doing. They can get most of it in, but it is in the works and there is, you'll see those popping up throughout the subdivisions. But they are working on getting the big trees that are tall tagged to get them out, plus the stumps. And there's one other thing, but I'm going to leave that for trustee Pop to discuss. That's the end of my report.
Personal report.
A few things. Of course, Halloween is coming up next week on October thirty. So I know, I'm pretty sure the kids are in early release that day. So trick-or-treat hours are from three to seven. And then our own Halloween happenings are going to be at seven to ten at Fireman's Park. We'll have a bonfire and a DJ playing. And we're having a trunk-or-treat also in Fireman's Park where the different local businesses, we're hoping to get, you know, about twenty. So after they finish their trick-or-treating at home, they can come up to the park and have bonfire. And the businesses in town will be bringing a vehicle and decorate the vehicle with more candy so they can trick-or-treat between the vehicles on top of it. And then two, we're going to have, we've got a sponsor-- And then two, we're going to have, we've got a sponsor, where the first hundred kids will get a pumpkin, a little pie pumpkin, to take home with them, and then two concessions will be open, and again, kind of like Kids' Day, for a dollar or a dollar or a dollar and a half, pretty much everything, and free popcorn and hot chocolate. And then we've also picked a date, tentatively is to save the date for the tree-laying celebration on December sixth, and we'll be working on, you know, more details of that, and then we'll also, and I know Public Works and several others are working on for the Holiday Express, and if you remember, the first time we tried that last year was called the Polar Express, so it's going to be a little bit different this, this year. And then also Zumba Fitness Classes is still looking for more participants, there's, okay, if I'll remember, Monday and Wednesday daytime, and then Tuesday and Thursday evening classes. So, you can just call Village Hall and to get registered, or go onto the website and get registered for those.
Business development. Finance?
Yes, I have something. If the trusty thing you laid on your desk here, this is the shared revenue and expenses, and you can see the revenue, we actually collected twenty-five thousand dollars in sponsor revenue from various businesses in and around Monee, and so you see, you look through here and you see the vendors or the sponsors, make sure you thank them as you frequent their businesses. And then vendor revenue, and carnival revenue, sales and activity revenue, and then the last, second last page is the fall fest event expenses. Bottom line for, for our town is that we, we had a gain of approximately fifty-three hundred dollars. Not that this is a money-making event for us, but it's good, it's nice to be in the black instead of in the red, so. You guys have any questions on this?
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
I don't see any leg run here for maintenance or police. Do we have expense for that?
I'll have to defer to Mr. Batista.
We do, I don't have, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe the trust department from last year, we saved approximately thirty, eighty-six, thirty-six, thirty-six hundred, and Public Works, we're still waiting for those stories, but it's considerably less last year in spending shares because of the email, they volunteered and their work policy, they have the answers for overtime.
Thank you.
That would mean that we're going to need to make a true statement here of being a law school, but anyhow.
This is the, yeah, I, I think this is intended to identify the, the net revenue versus expenses that are tangible as compared to, if you're looking at anything that we do, be it movies in the park or anything else, there's always going to be additional costs that are going to be involved, the fact that we're the host for a lot of these types of activities, so even Halloween last year, we had extra police presence, and I would expect we'd have some this year as well, but it doesn't mean that we necessarily quantify that to that particular task, it's just a part of what Public Works does, it's part of what police does. If you want some of that, we can try to identify how many hours were actually worked on the Saturday, Sunday, I guess Friday evening, and that would be useful to know. I'm, I'm not disputing that, that's good, good information to have a better idea of the overall budgeting of that, but I think some of that was anticipated into the budget for those departments individually, so.
Yeah, and that's why I raised the question, a couple of those budgets were eighty percent already for the year in terms of what we spent, and so I think we might want to identify where we're spending that money, and if it's here, that's something we just need to be transparent about, because it's, it's being spent, and we're already six months into the year and spent virtually all the overtime budget on some of the departments, and we haven't had winter, so we haven't had some of the other things.
I, I don't know where you come, Chief, do you know, is your department anywhere in the area with a certain year?
The last budget comparison I looked at, we're at forty-four percent of our total program, and normally we anticipate being up in that area because of fall fest, and we usually taper off for the rest of the year and go back to kind of what happens.
And I believe you, we've also been advertising and promoting, trying to hire some more part-time jobs.
And then maybe I'll ask for the finance director to provide us with the budget expense year-to-date by the next meeting.
And I believe the mailbox actually, there's one in the mailbox that's currently, it's a dry copy.
It was from fifteen minutes ago.
No, it wasn't, that's all.
I don't trust you, or to ask him to have it for you, and.
Okay, fair enough.
He has it tonight, but.
I'll hold my comments to the next meeting. No, I mean, I, again, I think it's a good program.
That's one of our, that's one of our goals, is to make sure that we don't wait till the end of the year to find out how, how far right, you know, where we're at on that. It's important, once we get through our audit, which, you know, we're in the final stages of that, I believe, Trustee Horn, I believe you, you also, you, you had a copy of the treasurer's report?
I don't have it.
Is that also in the boxes, Joe?
That, that is not in the box, we did just complete it today, though, the treasurer's report.
Okay, so the treasurer's report is ready, or will be ready. Officially has to be posted October thirty-first. That's a scary, but anyhow, but that has to be posted by October thirty-first, I believe, in the paper, it'll be posted as well, so we're coming along with that. All right. Building services. Building services, if you can.
Trustee Gray kind of nailed something over there, and we expected our, our two different departments kind of overlapped a little bit, so I'm going to lap into this in just a second, only because I was driving by Country Meadows and I saw the construction company there repairing some curbs and what have you, and I know the sidewalks and the mud yet, so I'll mention that. I'm sure most of you have noticed as you travel off Weston Court Street, that plain white Monee Heating and Air Building, it's looking very nice, it's very attractive for our, our community, I commend them on it, and most of the inspections are coming along real good. The rough stages for the electrical, mechanical framing, plumbing are all approved, so we have any close-up walls and what have you, they already poured the sidewalks on the north side, they're grading the property now, so it's, it's looking better all the time, I commend them for the nice job they do. And the best western lobby, which I've seen pictures of before, the final inspection for that is scheduled for tomorrow, and it really looks nice, I don't see a problem with the inspection going through. I will also say that since I got into this department, I, I will commend our co-inforcer, I can't believe she ran me out of ink, I told her stop, of course, ink's very expensive, folks. I get page after page after page from her, of where she visits, how many times she has to go, and she, and she's just busy, she's doing her job, I like that, and I didn't tell her to stop setting stuff, I just went out and got all ready, but doing a good job. End of.
Thank you, sir. Public safety, please.
Yeah. Police Department, back on September seventeenth, hired new part-time police officers, named Gary Rizza, he's currently halfway through his career training, and the police department is still accepting applications now through October twenty-sixth, for certified and sworn officers for all part-time. End of report.
Sheriff's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have four items for the voice consideration. The first item, the board recalls, we reached a town agreement with Budgeritt, Buck lines, and all the site. Which is, which one is it? That's wrong, sorry. I have to give a few minor clarifications, agreement, not determined of it from a financial standpoint, but I believe we're going to ask for a little more specifics concerning landscaping, a couple other issues, I haven't talked to Mr. Spezia about it today, but I will, I've thought about, so to make a long story short, if we can table this to the next board meeting, they did purchase the land already, but we have to find, we would like to finalize this agreement.
And I'm sorry, Larry, may I say that, as long as you mentioned Budgeritt, I neglected to mention that we were, that some of us were at the groundbreaking, it was a very nice ceremony, whatever, they had the golden shutters out there and the hard hats, and it's a real welcome, a nice thing to see them breaking ground, and we know it's happening, so, thank you.
I entertain a motion to table Budgeritt's agreement for.
Second.
Pop and Raisik, roll call.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Raisik?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, we received a fifth payout request from Annie I. Hickman regarding two five eight, five oh, South Redland, also known as Alvin Avenue Investors LLC, pursuant to redevelopment agreement, we've agreed to reimburse the owner ninety percent of real estate taxes, they provided proof of payment of two thousand thirteen, amount of nine hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars, thirty-six cents, which would be eight hundred twenty-three thousand, five sixty-two forty-two to be reimbursed to Annie I. Hickman. This is not a general obligation of the village, this is a, through the Tiff district out there, we've done this for the last, I believe, ten years. We need a motion to approve said payment.
And I just want to clarify, you're, you've reviewed this to make sure that the numbers are correct for the amount expected, as well as payment has been received by the county, correct?
That, I have to have the legal verify the, the payment.
Might I suggest we entertain a motion to approve this contingent on finance director's verification of proper payment to the county? Oh, then you have, well, that's just a crap from the website, though.
You can make that motion subject to verification.
Subject to verification, is that okay? We simply do that, because, I mean, that's a formality of the law.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Trustee Gonzalez and Pop. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Trustee.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a payment request from Raylar LLC, they, and then we reached a redevelopment grant with them, with nine years ago, in that agreement, we agreed to reimburse them eighty percent of the Tiff revenue, which were the amount for this year of nineteen thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-five cents. Again, we can make the motion subject to verification.
I figure that one's very.
I, I have to say.
Ruben, if you, you merced verification of this, okay. I, I do want to address before we make a motion on that, so the board's aware of it, you also see below the calculations that they illustrate on there, that there's a reference to interest that they would like us to see. This agreement, along with any other agreements, I would please encourage the board to review copies of those agreements and take them very seriously as to learning from what's gone on in the past and what we want to do going forward. You'll see a striking difference between the last two that we've talked about here compared to the one we just passed, which was for Budgeritt. There's other towns not too far from here that have given away ninety percent, plus seven percent interest, or different things of that sort, and when you start doing the math, even on a smaller note, like this one here with Raylar, if we pay them twenty thousand a year, fifteen thousand a year, or whatever, if you do the math over time, we're barely paying the amount that would be accrued once of the interest that they accrue. Seven percent interest is accrued today, I understand what took place maybe ten years ago, but I think you can be a little more sensitive to what's practical by today's standards. The paragraph that's referenced here indicates that after talking to, I guess it's one of the developers, we appreciate receiving the developer's note, which is for three hundred thousand dollars plus five percent interest, interest owed through twenty twelve was approximately a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. At some point, you get to realize, depends on what the interest payments are on top of those things, you're going to be paying out more than they've even invested into the stuff, which is not practical when you think about, we're responsible for the infrastructure, road improvements and upgrades and things like that to support them being there, we just can't afford to keep doing that, or else we're going to end up like other towns that have done that and have nothing to show for it, and they've implemented things like head taxes and stuff like that, which we don't want to get involved in. The note to the agreement, if you will, Larry and I discussed this, Ruben has looked at it as well, it does not stipulate that we have to pay the interest on the front end, the back end, or anything else, it just says that if funds are available at the time at which, you know, we are, we have the opportunity to pay the interest, but it's not a requirement, unless funds are available and the district is still intact. I would discourage personally paying the interest because there's nothing in the agreement that stipulates we have to pay it at any particular time, other than, the presumption is, Larry, to help me clarify this for the board, presumption is, the interest is accrued until such time as the note is paid off, and then you start addressing the interest for the remaining balance of the Tiff district.
Yes, sir, and, and as the mayor indicated, the interest back eight, nine years ago, it was seven or eight percent. These are basically a pay-as-you-go tip, if the money's there, you can pay them, if not, there's no G O. behind this, that's why the interest is a little high, partly because they're taking a risk that we'll be successful. The village, as the mayor indicated, the village's obligation to be paid pursuant to what money comes into the increment. If there is no money, then at that point in time, there's no liability from the village's standpoint, not, like rural kitchens is a whole different story, but in these two situations, as the mayor indicated, it's if the money comes in, the Tiff generates adequate to pay the note, and you pay down the note after the Tiff expires, it's null and void. So, if the money's there, that's fine, if it's not, there's no obligation to the village.
The goal is to use these funds to establish a better economic potential for those properties and properties for a living, and so, going back to this, it has been verified, I believe, as far as the nineteen thousand, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that portion of it.
Yes, sir.
So, we're just making a motion on the reimbursement of the?
Of the specific.
Tiff, not the?
Right, the incremental. Correct. Well, it, it applies to the developer's note, it whittles away at the three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated, but it's.
You're right, I think what they want to do, Trustee Gonzalez, just preserve the right to say interest is due and owing, they do this religiously for the last five to six years, indicating this is what they figure interest is due right now, but all we've done is pay the principal, which is a nineteen thousand, two hundred seventeen.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, was that, did you, so did you make a motion on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy dollars, fifty-five cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Horn?
And Holston. Roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item, this is, we received a request about three months ago from a company called High Street Properties, and I know council is here to end on their behalf. High Street Properties, he's on Redland Avenue, they have a tenant in there who's in the process of vacating within the next, I believe, eight to nine months, that's a seven hundred thousand square foot facility. The owner is requesting us to not extend the Tiff, but to extend the note in order to induce a potential tenant coming in there. It is, again, seven hundred and thirty thousand square foot, and they believe they might have an interested tenant in there, they would like the board's input about whether they would extend the length of the note, again, not the Tiff district. The note is just like we've done before, it's a pay-as-you-go, if they are successful in paying the taxes, they get reimbursed, just like we did tonight. Mayor Ruben is here tonight on behalf of High Street, High Street Spaces. High Street's based out of Boston. Two of the representatives met with myself and the mayor and Mr. Patista roughly two or three weeks ago. You know, timing is critical from their standpoint. I did indicate to Ms. Ruben that the board would be apprised of the situation, so if there's any questions from me, the mayor, or Mr. Patista and Ms. Ruben here tonight, they are asking for some consideration from the board tonight, if I, I think we have one meeting, and Ms. Ruben's been very consistent with her letters to me, her phone calls, what her client is asking the board and the mayor to take into consideration about extending the note.
And keep in mind, this is one that we just approved, I believe, that was addressed at NAI Hifman as the recipient of that petition, but we're talking about the same parcel here. And just for clarification, this is also the same property we're currently at. Michelin is the, not so much the occupant, but we all know that is the place of business there. And again, here's the situation order, I believe. This one was 90%
Yes, sir.
Of the increment
Yes, sir.
Plus 7% interest.
I believe it was 7%.
I don't quote it, but that's roughly where it's at, and 90% of the increment plus 7% interest on the original developer's itemization, there's not a whole lot of latitude there for, expectation for any of the funding to go towards the rest of the district to support infrastructure needs to take place of. I'm well aware of the fact that it takes incentives anymore to get anybody to go anywhere. That's something that the board's going to have to balance, is to, in fact, that our predecessors, based on the economy of the day, I'm not going to fault them for it so much, but it was the economy of the day, that was the norm. We got to be able to have something to show for whatever decision we make, and if that's, I believe in our meeting, we addressed the possibility that if we extend any portion of the note, that we eliminate the interest portion of it at least, so there's some benefit for the village, that it's not this perpetual carryover, or we set a specific limitation on, if we extended it, if we were able to get the legislature to extend the district, that the limitations will always be included in that. So, what's the board, ask questions? Yep.
Do we know what year we are in this?
That one is expiring, I believe, 2023. This is the same one we're talking about.
21.
21 is expired?
And it was for 23 years?
No, it was for, it was issued in 2005, so it was 15 years because it was issued the next year.
And do we know how many years the extension is being asked?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, come on.
Um, the, my name is Mary Ruben. The High Street is requesting that it be extended through the 28, uh, 27, which is five more years. You know, just, if I may very briefly, and I don't want to take any more of your time, but, you know, the taxes here went up between 2010 and 2013 by 35%. And talking to the county, it looks like they're going to be up 65% by the 2015 from 2010. I'm not sure what's happening, but, I didn't know this better than I do. Right now, there's 20 million square feet of industrial space, either online or coming online in Cook County, or Will County, and, you know, this is a tough spot. It doesn't have highly visibility, it doesn't have good signage, and what they're asking is to go out and be able to work with tenants to make it competitive. But right now, you know, you've got all this stuff in Elwood, you've got the Sagway Terminal in Joliet, they're building more, 53 and 55, there's all that brand new development, and their taxes aren't as high, they're just not as high. And, you know, the mayor made the point that he wanted to see some contribution to the village, and one of the things Larry suggested is that, you all know, when you go out on Ridgeland, that road's pretty bad looking, a lot of it at the cave, resurfaced, the sign is broken, literally. Fixing the sign, we're talking about monument sign, with some nice landscaping, half of, you know, the existing building, Rose's building, is empty, and if this building goes empty, it's 750,000 square feet, and vacancy, and it creates vacancy, just like development creates development. So, my client is also connected, putting out a amendment, I have them to re-tenant the building, to, you know, make it look, extra loading docks, modernize the building, to be able to attract a tenant. So, that's why they're looking at this, that's why they're requesting it, and, you know, ironically, when you go out and spend a million and a half or $3 million on a building, your taxes go up. You know, that's your, that's your reward, because now your assessed value went up, and in Cook, in Cook County, you get the 6B, so that doesn't happen, but not in Will County. So, as soon as you start putting money into your building, you're raising your taxes. And, you know, that's, that's happening, and it's going to keep happening. So, you know, they're asking, again, to, you know, work with the village to get that extended, and then, again, to make the kind of improvements that they're going to have to make out there to attract new development, not just them and their building, but other buildings in the area. It does need some, I'm going to tell you, it needs some work.
All right.
Any questions? I'd answer.
I don't want to think you've mentioned it as a possibility. It is basically three connected buildings, and one of the things you're looking to do would be to perhaps isolate the three of those for separate tents for each of the three, if necessary.
If necessary, well, no, I think that it really wouldn't be practical to have three tenants, and I think at the lowest, they're looking at two, 350,000 foot tenants, and obviously, everybody's goal is a 750,000 foot tenant, to just have one tenant, like Michigan, a Michelin who takes care of the building.
You said there's 20 million square feet going online in the next
Or online, yeah.
Where's that, where do you get this figure from?
Well, I have a map, I have a map and all the details, which Larry has, and all people either resend them and ask him that he passes them on. It's all from the broker, you know, the broker version of the MLS for industrial property, and so what we did is we took all of the over 35, 350,000 to a millions square feet, then everything up to 350 to 500, I'm sorry, and laid them out on the map, so you can see them on the map, you can see where they're located, then we have a list of the addresses and a list of the tax rates, the property taxes, and you can see that nobody's even close to our property taxes.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
First of all, I mean, full disclosure, make sure that council knows that I'm the general manager for that facility over there, so I know the facility real well. I know some of the circumstances that have been happening over the last few years there, I'm well aware of that, and the pluses and the minuses, there's 120 people over there going to be out of work in about 12 months, so certainly, from a economic point of view, we'd like to find something. But there's also residents over there who have had complaints about sound and have asked for remediation over there in that respect, and there's at least one representative in the crowd tonight from that residential area. What plans do you have to resolve that? And I ask that question because if we're going to give 90% and continue that, and 7% on that, what are we getting back on that?
I think that, we've talked about that with the village, I've talked about that with Larry, and frankly, we would defer to the village. If the village says do this and this, then that's what we'll talk about doing. If the village says do this or that, then that's what we would do. So, we don't have, I don't have clear understanding, and I've just been involved tangentially in these conversations, as to what it is the village would like done. But if you make that clear, that's certainly something that will get done.
Yeah, I think one of the issues there, just, where you have to speak on that, Mary, what Trustee Holston was referencing there is, there's some question as to the practical aspect of the type of wall that's there, it's intended to be a sound barrier wall, and at the top of the berm in the back of the property there, it ended up just being a wooden fence.
Which isn't going to help much for sound, but, and one of the things Larry and I are both familiar with, I represent Elk World Village, and Larry works a lot with Bedford Park, both of which have airports, and there's been a lot of work done in Bedford Park and Elk World in terms of soundproofing houses for the airports, and it seems to be a very successful, successful program. It's just, I can't even tell you the details of
We may not have to speak to this, but are they looking at possibly putting some of the doors on the other side, on the north side instead?
Yes.
So that they could take some of the traffic noises there
Yes.
But on the side. I think that probably is one potential option as well, that I've been looking at before.
There's been inherent limitations as a result, once somebody pulls in the form for a trade zone, it's there, they can't pull out to do service on the vehicle if it if it
Well, to clear the record, that will not be a federal form
I don't, that's one of the current entrances there, because if there's a problem with the tractor-trailer situation there, they can't just pull around on the other side of the building and service because of the restrictions that are on the zone.
Well, and also, they obviously can't do anything to the building without a permit from the village, so they have to come in with their plans, the plans would have to be approved, and I suspect there'd be quite a bit of difficulty with it.
I, just, again, if the doors are all facing north, which I know is not typical because of the frost and everything else and the climate that we're in, north versus south facing the residential area there, especially our state homes that are moving to the south there, anything can be done to foster, that would be a good faith effort towards remediation of some of those issues.
And I am totally out of my league to say anymore about that.
That's right.
And just to go back to some of the things that you had mentioned before, we talked about the interest, you know, perhaps working with us on the interest portion of it, and then what you did say, or did I not hear you say that there is already an interested or potential interested party?
There is an interested party, I don't know who it is, my client's talking to them, I hope they're at the letter of intent, that's what I've been told by one of the people. And they are also working with another company, another industrial management company that has, it's twice the size of High Street, and they have twice the leasing power, so they really have, H, I, I still know HSA, but Hifman, NAI Hifman is having the leasing team right now, but then there'll be another group coming in to work with them, and again, they have more national, more national presence. So they really want to get this, they don't want this building to fall empty.
Well, and that's, you know, pretty much what we don't want either, so
Exactly, no.
Are they looking at timetable now to make the action and stuff?
You know, Trustee Gonzalez, I know time's critical from Mary's standpoint and her client. Again, we don't know the identity, who the tenant might be, but Mary's going to introduce the pads up, the next board meeting, the mayor's permission and the board's permission, we could take a further look at it, but tonight, it's just conception, saying what they're looking for, and that, introduce Mary.
And if I may, I'd like to put together some numbers that I think will be more satisfactory in terms of the interest issue, and, you know, also commit to the repaving, the signage, and maybe get them to the mayor and Will Dinn and Larry to look at, and maybe we can figure out something from there.
This is meant to, as much as this seems like it's on an accelerated point of interest, we're doing everything we can to make sure the board is aware before we actually have to take a decision, so you guys feel pressured into doing something. You need to digest this, you need to identify how you feel, our role as representatives of the community in the best interest of the long-term aspect of this, you know, the property, not saying necessarily the current owner, but the entire property has benefited from such an extreme, by today's standards, percentage of the increment. If they're looking to rearrange the numbers, and there's not a loss for the village specifically on that, if it helps them establish a trend going forward, I think that's okay, but we need to see that in hard numbers, so we can digest it, not just how do we feel about, because we've had other agreements that we've read through and found out later that it didn't work out so far.
No, and that's what I'm suggesting, that I can compare some hard numbers, run through my client, and then we can come back and sit down and talk to you, and then, Larry.
And then perhaps even if we all knew who the tenant was, you know, I don't know, sound might not be as big of an issue?
Oh, yes, it is.
No, no, she's saying if it's a different type of tenant, I think that would be a problem.
Again, that we would look to the village for direction on this one.
I think we're always going to have an issue in that this property is next to residential area, but this property also is zoned appropriately. There's always going to be an issue, the best we can do is to try to mediate that as much as possible, which I think we can do. I don't think we're ever going to have the residents be happy, but there's also substantial tax burden there that in order to take care of the infrastructure in the village, somebody has to pay for it, so I think we have to, I do agree with the mayor that previous Tiffs were pretty one-sided during that particular economy. This economy is a little different, but we also need to remember that this is a 720,000 square foot building, and we don't want sitting. We already have another one that size over here on this side of the street that's sitting empty. That doesn't bring tax revenue in, that doesn't bring people to the restaurants, that doesn't get grocery stores, that doesn't bring people in to move into town. So, we need to balance both residential needs and industrial needs, and without new industry coming in, we're not going to be able to develop the infrastructure financially to be able to afford the things we have to do, and the water system, and on the roads, and everything else we need to do with that.
Very good.
Mayor, can you at least ask your client, we know they're not able to discuss who the tenant might be, but how many job openings would be created, they've moved in there, and we do have a program that where the only residents would like to be, we have a pro
First consideration?
Yeah.
That's absolutely no problem at all.
And we don't have a mandate on it?
That's absolutely no, and I think we talked about job fairs, in a meaningful way. We have a job fair where people
I would like to be one of the first.
What position, you can't tell.
Young manager, of course.
I'm kidding. Yes, and we were talking, we were talking about, you know, one of the things that I think is missing from the last agreement is just prevailing wage, you know, which is, is your public funds, and, you know, to commit to prevailing wage, commit to doing some of the infrastructure we talked about, the hiring preference, I mean, that's the right way to do it.
Sure. Okay, so we will look to get some more information from you, and if necessary, we can pull the board to get a feel for this. It doesn't necessarily, it'll have to be solidified at a regular meeting, but it doesn't mean we can't survey the board as, as you before.
Thank you so much for letting me in, I know this is part of the normal meeting, but I should appreciate that.
Updating, update, we're here in Farnsworth, the Jiffy Trail project, Ruben, what do you have to say?
To update the board, we are moving forward, we just received confirmation from IDAT for our MFT funds, their approval. It is an agreement between the village, Farnsworth Group, and with IDAT for our Phase One completion. Back in September, Superintendent Cruzella and I met with Farnsworth Group, Joe McKenna and his staff, and we looked over at the engineering, and if I could just say this, it was very impressive. We spent time, and it was a collaboration. We were presented some options, we weighed the good, the bad for each option, and so the village is participating, actively participated in this process, and we did then present and spoke with each one of you after that meeting, and it was, it was the most beneficial meeting at that. Well, one thing, as we're moving forward and to stay on track with our timeline schedule that was provided to the board, the next part would be a public open house, and what we're looking at is for November 5th, which is a Wednesday, and it would be from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, it would be open to the public. At that time, Farnsworth Group would do a presentation of the concept, it would be an overview, it would be a presentation of the intersection design and what the proposal would be. It would be open to the public and open for public comments. The comments would be gathered, documented, and forwarded by Farnsworth Group to IDAT as well. We would also post that information on our website after the meeting, and we would have the intersection, we would have the concept visual for the public to also look at, for those that missed the meeting. You'd be able to also comment For those that missed the meeting, you'd be able to also comment as well. At this point, I'm going to let Joe McKenna just kind of fill you in a little bit more of the process and understanding of what the next few steps.
Thank you. Yes, at the, at the open house, what we like to do is obviously an opportunity to get the public involved as far as the alternative selected, what's going to be done, and make sure we give a fair opportunity for, for everybody to, to attend and comment on that. So best way for us to do that is advertise the local paper, which is something provided to the village to send over to Russell Publications to put that out. As well as administrator identified, put something on the website, have something on the marquee up front. Certainly don't want to restrict the time, if there's, it's, it's very open as far as we would have through representatives here to talk through those alternatives, the pros and the cons that were, we went through with the village, and how it came upon and what we came upon as far as the preferred alternative. From there, we also have handouts that would be available to public take with them to think about. The best way to, as far as the comment forms, we would provide those as well, also put those on the website. So if there are individuals that are unable to attend, who may have comments or questions that they'd like to ask, they can get that forward off their website, submit it, and all those will get the answer and become part of the record for the, for the report we provide to FHWA at the end of the process to show that all that was done. But as far as that goes, we'd have exhibits here available. Usually we'll do a quick 15-minute presentation just to kind of give that background halfway through about 6 o'clock. Can certainly go through that multiple times if, if it warrants, if we get, you know, a flurry of people at different times, can do that presentation quickly a couple times. We just kind of go with the flow of the night of, depending on how people attend that. So that's about it. You guys have any questions as far as how that would go, or?
Would you anticipate having it here?
Yes, it would be, it would be located right here at Village Hall, and that would be something that would be in the advertisement as far as the address. It'd be a flyer with the map on there showing that as well. So that's something to do at Village Hall from 5 to 7.
It would not be a requirement for the board to be here, but I would imagine I would expect the board all want to be here. So as a condition of that, we've already discussed with council, that it would probably be posted as a, it'd be an open house, a public hearing or whatever, but it would technically be a special meeting, as long as we know that at least three of us would have to be here, just to make sure we follow the guidelines of Open Meetings Act. So can I get an idea for sure, because if we're not going to have that, or necessarily get on there, do each of you think you're going to be able to attend that meeting?
Here's, sorry.
Let me just serve it.
Yeah.
All three of you, over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a quick question of that, you kind of threw a little wrench in the special meeting. Again, hopefully a lot of the village shows up because we've been hearing for the last year and a half. Would it be prudent to maybe suggest having it in a part building to have more space for people? Again, we, it's always hot and cold when, when people show up, but.
I think the rule from this for any of our meetings are here unless you're specifically, because it's here and we have to post it there. So to give an example, for the public hearing for our enterprise zone, that's being posted here, even though it's not really our meeting per se, it's the zone meeting, but we're posting it here even though it's off-site. People, I think, rule them and anticipate most of the meetings being here unless it's a part thing that we usually do over there. I don't know. DJ, can we get more people in the room while we're in the others, or?
To, to be a little more specific, this is an easier forum set up for that question and answer demonstration setup, as well as we could record at the same time if we need to be with the
Oh, the video.
Equipment that we have here and the projector, you know, cameras that we have here. We could set up a projector here and have higher ceiling height for audiences to see, would be a little more hindered back there if we kind of hold up that space. And still have people in here.
Ceiling aware. The ceiling aware of the apartment is only like seven feet tall or something.
Seven, eight.
Actually, actually more importantly, the sound there inside is not that good. We have a big roof, it'll be very hard to hear.
Typically, too, you know, it, it's hard to predict. I mean, if you get a few people, you can get a lot of people. But certainly if we have a bunch of people still here at 6:30 wanting to discuss a project, I mean, we've been in some of these where we've scheduled them only for two hours, and it turns out it was four hours, because the goal is to kind of address as many of the public comments as possible.
Right, so as they cycle through, you're basically able to do the same meeting three times during that.
That's typically the presentation, you know, we keep it short to the point. It would be in a kind of a PowerPoint presentation format that we would typically, it would recycle. There would be, people could read that, so they get a brief overview, you know, when you have the touch, you know, if we do that at 6:00, but then we're finding a lot more people are coming at 6:30, we could certainly do that again. So that's where it kind of, just depending on the crowd showing up, we can, we can modify that as we go.
And Mr. McKenna's already indicated that he's going to try to, as soon as you get most of the presentation materials worked out, he's going to try to get that to, so we can post it online as well, so people can come pre-educated on what's going to be presented. I would, I think that would help, would it not, or?
Well, we would have a lot of, you know, the, the information with the flyer, I think, gives a good general overview, but we'd like to probably post that at the same time, because we certainly want to be able to present it in full and not have people come to conclusions without some direction or opportunity. But certain, you know, that kind of leads to your point, if people couldn't make it, that presentation and everything else can certainly be posted on the website that, hey, if you missed it, here's what was presented, and certainly all that, all that documentation provided at that meeting could be available for anybody to see on the village website, so.
Pardon that, if I may say, DJ, I don't know if you know this, I walked in this building too many times. What's the occupancy there? You know?
137 on the back wall there, sir.
Good guess.
Any other building?
Hard for us to tell here. We got to stack them too high in here, or what do we do?
Standing.
It's hard, the other building's actually, it feels bigger. Yeah. It was a good idea, though.
Just, it was just a thought.
I know.
I hope everybody shows up. I hope we're, we're whole.
We could have October 31st and then really, you know.
We could, but it'd be right along.
Anyhow, um, thank you, Joe. Landlord licensing. Have you guys had a chance to review this? I think we need to make sure we take all the time necessary to review this, formulate your, your ideas and your concerns, and maybe summarize the concerns that you're getting, and provide them back to the administrator perhaps, for the purpose of trying to, if, if there's things that are specific that are concerns that everybody's hearing, maybe we can then formulate all of those concerns in one place so you, that they can be worked out between Larry and Ruben, and the chief would be involved in some of that, code enforcement might be a little bit. DJ, I, I, I don't know, it depends on the nature of the concern, so maybe that's an easier way than just trying to go through it line by line as a group. I still think there's relevance in having a committee of the whole meeting to discuss that, but maybe before we even get to that point, can each of you take, you know, each chapter or paragraph, whatever it is, and say, you know, this is fine, this is fine, here's what I take issue with. And then summarize what your concerns are and provide them back to Ruben, and then task him with figuring out a way to make that a happy situation. Yes, sir.
Since Ms. Frank is still here, I was wondering, I have a couple of questions, follow-up questions for you. Could you come up here? And I, I'm interested in, I'm interested in your experience with this. Could you tell me the address of this home that is, is it still vacant?
Yeah, because American Homes for Rent took it over from somebody else last year. They, they, they bought the property from some other investor, but the same people were still in there.
What's the address?
This is 25819 Hoover Court.
Hoover's Court, okay.
And you see, I live right across the street, and I'm retired, so I see everything.
So.
We're the neighborhood watch, aren't we, John?
If you can give me a, I, I'm interested in the timeline, so the tenants, they moved out, you know, approximately?
They were evicted.
Evicted?
They were evicted in, it was, I, I want to say May, because they had been there like a year and a half.
And then, and then the house was in disarray?
When, well, see, I'm very wholesome.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just interested, I.
With the house, on, see, they never, they never took care of the property.
The tenants?
We never knew how many people actually lived there, although there was supposed to have been, you know, see, I have neighbors that work and don't really, they said, well, there's only like one person and the two daughters and one dog. You know, it wasn't.
My question is, how long did it take American Homes to start working on the property?
After the eviction? I'd say it may be, maybe about a month ago, they finally started, they had something.
So all summer it languished in disrepair? Would you?
Yeah, 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 you know, I know the village was out there once cutting the grass in front, and they did have somebody out there that.
Well, we only do that as a last resort because the owners aren't.
And then they got the water bill that was posted on the door. I was, I had to go walk.
Hey, Bill, so you might want to give her a lawn chair and have her sit at the corner.
So, so now they're working on it and they're?
Maybe three weeks ago, somebody was inside, because like one man was there. It looks like maybe they had mold, because we didn't have any good to speak of, and they, they, but not, yeah, and they didn't have a generator. So they must have, it must have got moldy in there, because it looks like they were replacing, you know, their first phone, yeah.
So basically all summer it was?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're real slow. And then, yeah, now they've been out there. And it looked like they tried to take the sticker off the door, the eviction sticker, but they couldn't get it all off.
There's no one living there now?
Oh, no.
Okay. No further questions, you're on.
Your host, your case. My witness made me see that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyhow, so if, if with the boards, instead, I think if we can just go through and identify, talk to people that you know that have mutual concerns, share what was posted on the, those, those two samples, and try to figure out a, a hybrid.
And I've got six other villages if anybody wants extra copies, if I can give you six other villages programs.
Well, I think what you summarized, you know, what was summarized and the one that you had, as well as the summary that the chief had, well, I think between there, that's a good starting point, not to say you can't compare other communities or whatever.
Yeah, but I, I don't think those two are the same. I think
They're not.
They're two good documents, we, we probably need both of them.
Right, but I'm just saying, regardless, they're, they're both relevant to our concerns of nuisance abatement, as well as, as good housing.
Prevented.
Yeah, so.
Are any of those, those, those agreements from, from villages that are our side? Yeah.
And what you got in the final document last time was basically putting together of that, what's input from the chief and from Ruben, along with my input, it was kind of taking all of those to put in into one document to make it something that looked like it would work for longer. Subject to, you know, input from you.
But, but please, take, take, take the time necessary to do this and do it right. I mean, ideally, it'd be nice to be able to have this, here, here's the situation, we, we, we're getting close to the, close to the end of the year. There are some things that we're addressing, the landlord licensing, we've had some discussions internally regarding the business licensing practices that we have and things like that, that's kind of, as a side shoe to some of this, identifying point of context for the various, I mean, you know, some of the businesses have four or five layers of points of contact based on what aspect of the business we interact with them on. We haven't asked probative enough questions in the past to know who to really talk to about different things. There's, we want to make sure we get all this solidified privately in November, in order to make sure the paperwork gets submitted out, Michelle, the paperwork that gets sent out to the businesses or whoever else for some of the licensing related issues. We want to try to move that along so that, right, typically, and then we've already approved the ordinance that took the liquor license and made the renewal date for that at the end of the year to simplify and so they haven't had all this busy work internally dealing with liquor licenses separated, a lot to park from the business licenses. So it just makes more sense to have a lot of those business-related things renewed at the end of the year. And a, and that's, that's all I can add, just. Open to the public non-genue items?
Actually, I have a couple of things, one on your old business and a new business that I see on there, so, if I might, please.
Okay, do we want to address this under open to the public, or is this something that you wanted to handle? I didn't get anything on the, go ahead.
Just really simply, too, for old business, I wanted to bring back up, I had gotten to speak to a gentleman who called me at my home a couple Sundays ago about our ordinance on the parking permit in the estate homes.
Okay.
And I promised I would bring it up tonight, and I've already talked to Mr. Batista about it. And again, I'm harping on our communication, and he came home, he lives on the other side of town, in the estate homes that weren't affected by our need for the ordinance, so he knew nothing about it until he came home and found the little red and white sign on the end of his block. And he was quite upset about it, and he brought up the fact, he said, okay, I'm having my driveway done, and now I have to park on the street for two days, and I'm going to need a permit for that. So I encouraged him to, you know, to get a copy of the whole ordinance and things and tried to explain it and calm him down, literally. But to the communication aspect, I think when we do something like this, especially if it affects, directly affects, you know, a certain portion of our town, that we need to let the residents know. And again, I spoke to Ruben about it, and to get a letter out to them, he doesn't get to this side of town to see the, you know, the marquee or anything. So we should have it available, should have it on the website, we should have it on a Facebook page, just saying that we passed a new ordinance that affects our residents, you know. Come get a copy of it in Village Hall, it's on the website, and send a letter, you know, to those, you know, very specific homes.
Sure. And to answer, just, I know you have two parts to your question or whatever, but the ordinance didn't allow for people to park on the street if they have a village sticker already.
And I explained that to him, but he had no way of knowing.
It, it, well, it says it on the sign. The sign actually says, no parking on village streets, these village streets without a village sticker or a temporary parking permit or whatever, something to that sort of, so it actually says without, without a village sticker.
Kind of a gentleman, after a few minutes of talking to him about it, you know, and, you know, after having talked to Mr. Batista, everything is fine. But again, I will say that I think we just need to be a little more conscious and of getting the word out.
Sure.
You know, so we've got older folks, you know, that might not have, or said whatever, we need to get the written word out, too.
After our conversation, Trusty Gonzalez, I spoke with Chief Zipcar and actually asked him to put a letter together, and also somewhat of a dot point for our website, and so he has passed that on to me. And by the end of the week, actually, letters will go out then to all the affected areas, and it's not only, there's, there's several areas that disaffects. So we've identified those addresses, letters will go out, that'll be on the website as well. And with the explanation from the village, why we did this, have an overview of it, so, just so you know.
And then just really quickly, too, that I had gotten a chance to talk to, something I brought up that Mr. Horn and I talked about even last year, and something that we just wanted to plant the seed, no pun intended, about a beautification for the committee and something doing in the, the village next year. And after, you know, the winter or when the winter sets in, we'll probably, you know, be looking, you know, for help, you know, committee.
Got one for you.
What?
Get ahold of the, the Moni Historical Society.
Well, that's, you know, we thought of, became the
Their interest.
Historical Society and some of the other things that we're working on in kind of bringing pride back to the village. And even like, you know, we talked about, like, living in country meadows, every street name is the name of a flower. What if everybody on daffodil planted daffodils in the next coming weeks, you know, crocuses and roses and? It's just simple things like that, I think, that we can do, help.
That would be pretty, I love a lilac. I can just imagine the spring, how pretty that would smell.
I actually used to live in Lombar, I grew up in Lombar, the lilac capital. It was pretty amazing when all the lilacs were.
And all the different varieties, anyhow.
So I, I loved that idea, and that's something that Doug and I have literally been talking about for about a year.
Okay, and so that is something that. Okay, uh, and so that is something that, uh.
I think a lot of the things that we're doing.
Oh, absolutely, I think it's a great idea, I think, you know, we, at one point or another, we've all seen the relevance of encouraging people to improve the appearance for the whole neighborhood. So would you consider this to be something where it would be perhaps a competition?
Yeah, yeah.
And allow there to be, uh, people could take before and after photos and show the best improved for a particular subdivision or?
And then a committee of judges, and you know, throughout the season, how the, you know, the.
As long as I'm not a judge.
No, I wasn't gonna ask you to be a judge.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I won't judge who's got the first name, you can, you can have a one. Anyhow.
That is all, thank you, if you'll let me bring that up.
Okay.
Now, open the floor.
I thought I got there. Um, open them up, like, non-genetic items?
Hi, uh, my name's Linda Marissa, and the gentleman you were talking about who was upset about that, uh, sign was my husband. Yeah, um, we came home, seen the sign, not quite sure, I'm trying to get clarification on what it means. My husband and I just talked to Michelle, and she wasn't sure what that meant.
You want me to give you a quick summary?
Yeah, if you could.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, 'cause I, all I know is I, I told my father, he couldn't come visit me until I wind up with what's going on. It says only village sticker, or we'd be ticketed in tow.
Yeah, so here's, here's what happens, uh, and, um, I want to make sure I use my words correctly, or. We, we've had some incidents where, uh, people have come from out of town, parked all over, uh, one of the subdivisions that happens to be, all the estate homes are on that side of town. And because of the, typically on your R three zone properties, there's a narrower, chief, what is it, twenty-one feet usually? Uh, and the roadways are typically a little bit narrower, you don't go, you don't do sidewalks, you don't do curbs, you don't have a little, like, out in subdivision where a lot of us live in town, the roads tend to be a little bit wider, uh, curbs, sidewalks, all that kind of stuff. In the estate homes, you don't have that, and when you have people parking, uh, for an event, a party of some sort, and they end up parking on both sides of the street, uh, we've had situations twice over the last, uh, summer where it was nearly impossible for emergency vehicles, actually a fire truck, it might have got through at least in one of those areas. Uh, so if you had a crisis situation where we don't preemptively set the rules, and the other problem you run into is when you have a large turnout of people coming to, and, and, and most people don't have big parties.
No, our, our subdivision had never had any problems, that's why we were so surprised when we seen the sign.
Well, and it's, and this is where for us to deal with it was to, to address it based on the, the nature, the commonality of the, the road infrastructure issues and, and all that, uh. So, most of those homes in the, the areas that are affected by that all specifically have longer driveways. Uh, you can park on your driveway, if you have guests coming into town and you got two or three cars of your own, if you don't park them in your garage, park them out, you can park yours on the street, you don't need permission to park your car on the street. The, uh, have all your guests parking your driveway, then that, that's, so if your father-in-law or whatever wants to come.
My father.
Father, sorry.
He don't believe in parking in somebody else's driveway.
No, in your driveway.
He don't believe in parking in anybody else's driveway, he always park in the street. He's eighty-six years old, he was brought up, you don't park in somebody else's driveway. So, I mean, but it's, how, how do I, I mean, does that mean nobody can park there?
Valet service will work for you.
Uh, what if I do have a party?
If you have a party, here's, here's what happens, is based on the nature of the things that we've run into, oftentimes we, we, we are faced with the balance of occasionally giving up some of our liberties to protect the freedoms of all. And, um, and what we've encountered this year, um, I guess previous, previous years as well, I think this happened, but this year it became quite obvious that we had to deal with the situation, and, um, if you're gonna have a party, I believe that there's, um, you can go get a permit, a, a temporary permit, uh, to put it in the window.
She wasn't sure about the permit.
Then you have to go to the police department to get it.
Is there a fee?
There's a nominal fee, I believe, uh, for the first, uh, minimal quantity, and then the, what we end up running into is if there is a need to have additional police presence because of the magnitude of.
Not that big of a party.
Okay, but you got to realize that what we encountered this summer was parties where you had probably a thousand people showing up in some of the subdivisions.
I understand.
And that being the case, if we know that you're gonna have two or three hundred cars as compared to ten or fifteen.
Is that gonna be over here in the main village? Because I don't see any stickers or signs on the main village that say, no parking.
It, it's only been in effect on the R three zone properties, which are the estate homes. There's a little bit different, uh, type of situation that's taking place there because of the types of the roads, the width of them, things like that. If you go to the subdivision where I live, chief, what's, rode on my subdivision's about thirty feet long?
Thirty-five.
So you, you could park on both sides of the street and you still get a fire truck, emergency vehicles, whatever, up and down both sides. There's reason for that, and the temporary permit does stipulate no parking on the south and no parking on the west?
West.
Uh, side of the road, just so that if somebody's issuing a temporary permit, they don't make the mistake of parking on both sides of the road and creating the same bottleneck we had before, anyhow. So when somebody comes to get a temporary permit, they're expected to adhere to the, you know, the preferring one side over the other so you don't have that issue. Also, no parking in cul-de-sacs, because, you know, once you park in a cul-de-sac around the circle, uh, you know, you can't get trucks to turn around.
Right, so we're getting lumped into an area where something else has happened, we're getting lumped into it, you know, we've never had any problems?
It's, it's not gonna be a problem for you. If, if you, it, I don't, I don't, I don't see it being a problem.
Because I'm, I'm gonna be having a Halloween party on the first, and I'm gonna have doctors and nurses and people from the hospital there. It's not gonna be too many, probably about twenty or thirty people at that, but
They just stop.
I don't want a doctor getting a ticket on his windshield, because he brought his kids over to my house for a Halloween party.
This, this, we're, we're learning how to address the situation right now, if, if you can simply stop at the police department, they'll.
Yeah, because we, he, John, my husband came over there yesterday to talk to her, and she said she didn't know anything. I had to talk to Jay, so I'm like, well, there's a meeting tonight, I wanna go there and see what's going on, maybe he knows.
I believe she reached out to John, uh, your husband, John.
Yeah.
Yesterday or today, I think, just to let him, I, I thought that she was going to, to let him know to contact the police department, because they're the ones who typically will issue that. Over the weekend, we had a situation where somebody had a death in the family unexpectedly. They didn't have time to get ahold of the police department, Michelle got ahold of me, and we had to issue some. It, it's kind of a difficult situation, but, you know, we're trying to figure out how to manage this. And, but if it's gonna be a party where it's planned, you can't plan somebody's death necessarily, so there's a little different situation and circumstances there, um, but in the situation where you've got a party, you know you're planning it, simply talk to the chief ahead of time and, you know, work out the details of that, it's, you know, hopefully people will be, you know, respectful enough even when they get the temporary permits, they don't live in town, you know, actually, if, if everybody invited, lived in town, and they had a village sticker, they could park in front of your house and it's not a problem.
Yeah.
It's just when they, when they don't, they don't seem to think as much about, similar shit we're having with the renters as compared to when, you know, owner occupied halls, you know, we're trying to find the best way to do it.
Yeah, no, I just, we've had parties out there before, I've never, never had any problems, I haven't cops call, never had any.
I heard of this is behind, you want to complain about how lovely it is?
Yeah, okay, and just so you know, we did try to work with them, and we are still working, and we will be happy someday if you guys can just work with us, that's all. Um, yeah, like I said, we were just trying to find out, because I want to find out from my family, because, you know, I always have Thanksgiving every year and they all come and park in the street, I don't want them getting tickets.
I understand, I appreciate that.
I mean, is there stickers that they can give us, like ten of them, so if somebody comes over, we can give them a sticker or something?
What it is, is the police have to identify who went into it, how many people are anticipating on a particular day. You can get it five weeks in advance, but it's gonna be issued for a particular day.
Uh, this is, uh, this is.
No, you can, I'm not saying you have to do it five weeks in advance, I'm saying you can get it anytime you want to, but it's gonna be based on the, on a particular date. The other, the other thing we ran into is because it's only good for that one day, um, again, if you're having a huge party of some sort that's, you know, uh, come midnight, party's gonna be over, because that sticker's only good till, for that one day.
Most of them might have been gone by ten.
I, I'm just saying, with the problems that we've had and our way of dealing with it thus far, that's a remedy.
You do understand you're punishing us for that.
I, I understand.
It's such an inconvenience that every time somebody comes, I gotta run to town to get a sticker?
No, if they park in your driveway.
They don't park in my driveway, they park on my street.
I parked in your driveway, I'm not afraid to park in your driveway.
I know, some people like parking in the driveways. So I have to run to town and get a sticker from them, that, I mean, actually, in a sense, that's what you're making me have to do.
You know what, when you go to the grocery store and they say for your safety and the safety of others, put your parking, your, your shopping cart away, just tell your friends when they come over, say, listen, I don't want your car to get hit by somebody you're driving down the road, park it in my driveway. I'm just, this, I'm not trying to do anything other than help you identify. Michelle, do you have a sample there?
I do.
Oh, you got the ordinance?
How easy would it be to be able to put that option on our, um, online payment plan on the village website?
The difference being is that after a certain number of them, it, it would go from forty-two dollars, it was a couple of dollars, I think, the chief identified.
Forty-two dollars, yeah.
At, at some point, when you get more than that, um, you're also dealing with a need for extra police presence, which is what we did not have anticipated or allocated.
However, it was possible to put it on the website, or if it's not possible, it's not possible.
Yeah, I think it's gonna have to still run through the police department.
Well, yeah, we can, nine to five, we can run a credit card through, but that's, you know, there's a minimum there, too, Gerald.
Two point seven.
No, I mean, what's the, how much the minimum?
You can, you. What's that?
You, you, there's not a little charge?
No, 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 no minimum charge.
There's no minimum charge.
But this, this particular ordinance was put in because of the, one particular situation that occurred twice. And I think we all agree that we had to do something quickly just to take care of it immediately, but we probably also ought to go back and look at other ways, and I think that's what your nuisance ordinance, since you've written, chief, uh, may do for us, so I think we may have a solution for that the next couple of months.
We may, and there again, this, again, we're transitioning. Trying to identify the best way to not impede your freedom any more than we need to, at the same time protecting your rights and, and keeping people from stampeding your property or whatever else, like just happened in other subdivisions of this, with the same type of classification.
I mean, putting a sign of like time, that would be better, because that way, after a certain time, if there's people are still parked there, then they can just go right out.
There, there's a lot that we still need to learn in, in how to best do this, and we're not opposed to retooling it. But for right now, this is kind of what we're faced with.
Yeah, because it doesn't say anything on here as far as how many stickers you can get, not, it doesn't say how much it costs for the sticker.
No, that, that's all based on the quantity that is necessary, because if you get over, I don't know if the chief actually has come up with the formula.